It's 5:30 in Low Plains, New London, New Hampshire. Welcome to the February 27th meeting of the New London Board of Selectmen and our first agenda item and most of our audience this evening is the Conservation Commission discussing Low Plains with us, Bob. And thank you all for what you're doing today, your unsung heroes, not only for what you do for conservation, but for coming out on a night like this. So, well, thank you. We didn't mean to gang up on you, but we brought a few people here today. This has been an interesting project. It's gone on for a long, long time. And I put together today just a quick history because some of this, the original formation of Low Plain, as we call it, officially the Estor Curia Wildlife Management Area at Low Plain, you know, all started in the mid, late eighties, that first 169-acre parcel. And at that time, Osborne Sargent played a very big role in putting all the pieces together, the gifts, the purchase, the trade, and came up with parcel 088007 that they actually owned in the beginning. And then it was transferred to the town. And that's why Osborne Sargent did not hold the easement because they were also the owner. So that's where Fish and Game came in. And Fish and Game, and if you read the sign at the entrance down there, there's about a dozen different organizations from federal level on down that all had input into that project. It's a very, very special place. In 2019, we had the opportunity to purchase 32 acres that, forest land that bordered on about 2,000 feet on Andover Road and then a couple hundred feet on Shaker. And that 30 acres added to the 169, made 200 acres, sizable addition. And we worked on that with private funding, largely the Mary Haddad Fund, but also a neighbor donated a significant amount of money to make that happen. And Fish and Game felt that this was such an important addition that they waived their normal stewardship fee that's associated with the conservation easement. And at that time, they also rewrote the whole description of the parcel. The Estor Curia Wildlife Management Area is sort of an entity of its own. It has its own management plan for forest improvement, for wildlife management, and And then on top of that is the conservation easement that is held by Fish and Game. So that was a fairly straightforward acquisition, and that was finished within a year. So the Low Plain area right now is about 200 acres. Then on May, it was May 4th, 2021, we had the opportunity, and this was on our list because we had looked at all the perimeter properties, and there weren't too many of them, that didn't have a house on them. And there were two. And one was this 23-acre parcel that bordered Andover Road. It was home of Cascade Brook, very important to wildlife, forest management. And more importantly, it connected a parcel, 089013, which has been owned by the town for about 37 years. It was purchased, it backs up to a development.
Laurel Lane.
Laurel Lane. And part of that's in New London, part of it's in Wilmot. But it isn't quite contiguous in that it touched in a corner, but we could never really do anything with it because there was no access other than coming in off of Laurel Lane. So it sat there for all that time. Then when we had the opportunity to talk about 088006, that was a natural because it connected those two parcels, so they were now contiguous. And that's why we call this project Low Plain 254 because if that is added, it adds 54 acres or a 27% increase, very sizable. Fish and Game is really behind this. They love the idea that we're willing to do it. State of New Hampshire Conservation Land Stewardship Program, those folks who monitor the properties every year, are really in favor of it. They think it's a great opportunity. This parcel is also where the ski club runs their trail, and we'd like to help out with that because they use decayed old pallets and so forth to support their ski trail. And we'd like to do something a little safer and neater, which we would do. But there is significant opportunity for improvement. So what we are asking is approval to include these two lots in the description of the Estor Curia Wildlife Management Area. And then also, it's really a separate process, but to ask Fish and Game to annex these parcels into the conservation easement. I have spoken to them. They are willing to do this. I got about a 99% assurance that they, again, would waive the stewardship fee because of the importance. And this would, unless we want to get into the real estate business and houses, every other contiguous parcel around Low Plain has a house on it. So that would probably be difficult, you know, unless it was subdivided or something. But it is a true treasure that I think Estor Curia would be very, very pleased to see, you know, where we've gone with this. And I thank everyone who was behind this. It took an enormous amount of determination, and it was good that some of us are pretty stubborn about things because we waited almost four years for all of the legal details to clear up on this. 23 acres doesn't sound like much, but it was a critical component. So that is where we are. By the way, we have this deed framed, if anyone would like to take a look at it.
In gold leaf?
Native pine frame. Are there any questions? Janet, you've lived with this the longest, so I'll let you go first.
Maybe it would be helpful, Kim, if you gave us an idea of the legal fees that were involved in this. Do you have any, like a ballpark?
You mean in the most recent purchase?
Yeah.
Oh, I think last time we talked, Bob, it was more than $10,000 in legal fees over more than three years.
And the sellers didn't?
I have no ideas what their legal fees were. They did have to prepare a deed, and that was the problem.
Yeah.
They couldn't prepare a deed that the town could accept and get title insurance on.
Right, yeah.
We have not seen specific invoices, but that's kind of the numbers that we heard. It was shocking, but we would be very happy to discuss that and see how we could help with that because it's really, you know, it's part of the program.
It came out of the legal fees for the town.
Right. Yeah. I guess I would add, I think Mary Haddad and Estor Curia would be absolutely delighted that this parcel has grown and it's such a worthwhile piece of land. So thank you all for all your efforts to make this happen, really. Thank you.
Thank you. Bibi?
Just echo those comments. Thank you for all the hard work.
One of my joys of this last three years has been following this process, and I'm glad we got to this point now and not a few months from now because I'm glad to be part of supporting what all that you've done. I think it's just been a great contribution. Now, as I understand, what you'd like us to do is twofold. One is to take the existing 30-acre parcel and officially say that's conservation land, even though it's been listed here. You've said to me several times, it's not, it's never been officially said it was conservation land.
No, it's strange. It's been listed in annual reports for a long, long time as conservation land, and it's specific, the parcel number and...
Yeah, I'm looking at it right here. I've got it right in front of me.
Right. But we could never find a conservation easement or a deed restriction. If it got in the annual report, it's probably in the minutes of some meeting, but, you know, I...
Way back when.
Yeah.
But that's one thing. And then second of all is to agree with your, what I think is your proposal, that the two parcels together be put under the same easement as with Fish and Game.
Correct.
And start that process. So, you know, I think the three of us can support that, those two notions, if you will, and get that process started. You realize that this will go on for another period of bureaucratic time to get all the i's dotted and t's crossed. It's not going to happen at town meeting two weeks from now.
No, but hopefully it won't be four years, no. I think it'll move fairly quickly.
It's a good start, and so that's, I guess I would entertain a motion that the Board of Selectmen support the desire of the Conservation Commission to carry out the combination of these two lots and to seek its inclusion in the Fish and Game easement at the Currier.
So moved.
Second?
Okay, aye?
Aye.
I guess I should ask, anybody in the audience want to talk about that? Yeah, good, Mark.
Would there be a town meeting, a decision to be made down the road then, or is this...
All things being equal, the safest thing to do will be at the next, hopefully the next town meeting, to have all the i's dotted, t's crossed, and simply because this is putting some constraints on the land technically, and to have that approved by the town meeting. That's the safest thing for the long haul. I mean, you've had that one piece of land for umpteen years, and there's never been any issues, but I think this is partially housekeeping and partially recognizing the hard work of the last three or four years on this last piece of land. So, I mean, I think you're...
Sure.
You're there, but, you know, there shouldn't be any expectation that we could somehow do that, you know, two weeks from last night either.
Right.
That just took a little bit too long to do it this year. But I, you know, I know from talking to Janet and Bibi, we were enthusiastic about this and doesn't always show with all the other things we have going on, but it does. You, in a message to me, Bob, and I just want to bring this up, said that if we did this, that you would eliminate the need for contributions to the Land Acquisition Fund Reserve. Is that still your case, that in completing this project, that you're happy now with the level of funding that we have there and that for the time being at least we can sit tight?
The first part of this happened in 2021, and we thought that was going to be our acquisition project for 2021. Then, of course, you know, this parcel that the town already owned, I mean, even though no money has changed, it certainly counts because it's being conserved. So to answer your question, and I don't have the latest number, but I believe there's still over 200,000 in the Mary Haddad Fund, and there was as of October, a little over 300, I think, in the Conservation Land Acquisition Fund.
Several hundred thousand, several hundred thousand dollars in different pots, yeah.
Right. So that's a good start for whatever comes up. So, I mean, I don't think at this time, every year, you know, it's different and we talk about it, but I don't think anyone in the Conservation Commission has any strong feelings that we have to, you know, do a petition warrant article or, you know, anything like that if...
Yeah, but your note back a couple of months ago, I don't mean to put you on the spot, did say that you thought this satisfied your current land acquisition needs, and I took that as a positive message that if we got through this, got the thing closed, that the annual debate that we have about putting money in could be tabled for the time being at least. Is that...
Yes, as far as this year, the way I understand it, the number was put in at zero.
Yes.
So that can't be amended and...
Always be amended at the floor of town meeting.
Okay.
The town meeting has the final say.
Yeah, okay.
The Selectmen and the Budget Committee recommended it be there, and at least my position when the Selectmen were doing with the budget was based on your note and the thought that if we completed this project, that we could sit tight for a while and...
Yeah, I don't foresee this coming up at town meeting.
Okay.
You know, I think we're pretty happy if we can get two parcels and, you know, make this happen finally.
I think that's what we'd like to, what we're supporting.
Right.
So while we've got you up there, could you just bring us up to date on the bog? Because that's the other major thing that you've been doing to help the town.
Sure. As far as the walkway is concerned, that has pretty well been replaced and refurbished. The first parts we did were the aluminum, and then the remaining old wood, a lot of it was decayed, has been replaced with three boards wide rather than two boards wide, and in many cases a railing. So it's really nice. It's secure. The boards don't bounce around. We don't normally do much work in there. Over the winter, we do a lot of thinking.
I don't know how you would get in there, except I've seen Mark do jumping a few times over there.
Well, it's odd. I see footprints. People are going in there.
Their marks.
Yeah, yeah, could be. So what we have been doing this fall, and we're working on this winter, is we are doing the signage. And the plan is to have good-sized signs, 18 by 24 color. We did receive a grant from the Extension Service and some other folks helped us with the wording, the layout. And we have seen one, should have brought it, sample. It's aluminum, you know, weatherproof. It has a coating on it, very professional. It's big, and there's going to be more than a dozen of those in different places.
Great.
We're about to place the order for the remaining signs that come pretty quick, two, three weeks. And then now we're designing and building the mounting stanchions. You know, how are we going to mount these, where? So little people, tall people, people that don't see well can all read these signs. And that, the cost of that has largely been covered by another grant from the Mascoma Bank Foundation. Those folks have been very, very generous and helped us, really helped us. Because we're not talking a couple hundred dollars, this is a few thousand, you know, to really, we just figured we've gone this far, we want to finish it and do it right. We don't want to do some half-hearted, you know, signage that's not going to stand up and last. So hopefully, come end of June, we're going to have a celebration when all of this is done. So it's been a long haul, but for the most part, it's been fun. And we certainly appreciate your support. And, I mean, an awful lot of people donated to this, organizations and private individuals. And I think we were surprised to see how many people donated what I would consider a significant amount of money.
Well, all of my house guests love going across the street and doing it, checking, walking out there, and they come back and give me reports. I said, "Yeah, I've been out there too."
Yeah, I mean, it's something you don't see in every town.
No, that's right, exactly.
It's a very special place.
Very special place, yep.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, and Michael and Jim and Rob and Mark and Sue, thank you both, all for what you do. And I'll miss you all, but I'll be sitting back there with you soon.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
It's always true, I'll age.
I thought I aged out of that. Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comments. Any public comments for things that are not on the agenda tonight? You're hearing none. Old business, town meeting. Do either one of you have any additional things that we need to talk about for town meeting, or you're all set until next Thursday?
Until...
Next Thursday, we will be meeting with Will and Michael to, where'd Will go?
Okay.
To go through all the details.
Okay.
And we could, if we'd like tonight, to, because I know particularly, Bibi, you have a calendar issue, talk about our coverage of the polls on the 11th.
Yep. I just had a training canceled for that day, so I am all day...
You'd like to do the whole 12 hours?
I could, but I can definitely do the first shift since Janet is...
Janet, you usually, you don't want to do...
I don't know whether I can give it up. Up to you guys.
I'm happy to do the final shift.
Okay, well, I'll do right in the middle.
You'll do the middle.
You will? Okay, I will do first thing.
Seven to 11, 11 to 3, and 3 to 7, okay?
Yep.
Bibi's 7 to 11.
I'm doing the early.
She's up early. 11 to 3 is Janet, and I'm doing 3 to 7. Okay? Well, I got that out of the way. Any one of the five of you want to talk anything about town meeting? We will have a more detailed discussion of town meeting next Thursday night when we have the moderator here. While we're talking about that, because there's a 7 o'clock League of Women Voters Candidates Night, do you think we can get everything done by 6:30, or should we start a little earlier?
What's your pleasure?
Well, Will, what do you think? Can we be out of here by 6:30 so people can drive over to sit and listen to Rich and company talk?
I think we could be quick.
Okay.
I can be quick.
Can Michael be quick? And Ann, can Ann be quick and so on?
Yes, I think he can.
Okay, so we will be, we're going to plan ourselves so that we're out of here in good time. Because I don't know of anything else that we're probably going to be dealing with. Do you all? So let's just leave it at 5:30 and we'll be good.
Okay.
We'll be out of here by 6:30.
Okay.
Okay. All righty, any new business, nobody? Your report, Kim.
Hey, well, it's town meeting 24/7 around here. Today, Will, Sam, Putnam, and I met. Putnam is in charge of the logistics for town meeting as far as getting the tables delivered, the chairs delivered, getting them stored during the day because the school's being used during the day until we can move them into the gym, getting the chairs set up. We have the police and fire department dealing with outside traffic. I want to remind everybody that the entrance will be on, from Pleasant Street, and they will be directed to park. We'll have the handicap parking over by the Professional Development Center. Everybody's going in that entrance, check in with the ballot clerks, and then they'll walk down the hallway into the gymnasium. So Putnam's going to help us out with all that, but all the town department heads are, you know, set up and ready to go. But we have to plan on a lot of logistics, you know? If it snows, if the public works, the people are out plowing, they won't be available for tables and chairs set up. So Putnam's got all of those different scenarios, and we'll be ready.
Has he come up with a cadre of babysitters?
Yes, he's working on that. We'll have childcare. We've reserved the, what do we call that other gymnasium where we used to have the potluck?
Elementary school.
Multi-punk, yeah.
Elementary school dining.
Yeah, so we have that reserved, so we'll have people there to watch kids. They'll probably have coloring and maybe little games. So those voters that have children that they can't leave at home can bring them and...
Good.
Yeah.
Great, thanks.
We've got lots of chairs coming, so hopefully we can fit, what do we think, Will? 1,000 people? No. 1,000? I think, yeah, we could. We'll have 700 chairs delivered, plus we have the bleachers. The youth selectmen and martyrs will be up on the stage, so we're turning it to have more room. The ballot clerks won't be taking up as much room as they had before, so, yeah, it's going to be an effort, but we want to make sure everybody's comfortable, everybody has a place to sit.
Good.
And remember, everybody, 6 o'clock, so it'll still be light out, that'll help. We talked about lighting in the back area, so Sam will rent some lights to put so that when people leave, because obviously it will be dark when they leave, make sure we have good lighting. So we're trying to think of everything, make it as safe and as easy as possible.
What's the plan for the walking from the entrance down to the other end for those folks who, I know my dad couldn't walk that far.
Well, hopefully he will be able to park right near the entrance to the Professional Development Center. You know the area where we usually park?
Yep.
We're going to try and reserve that for people with walking disabilities, so...
But even that's still pretty significant.
Yeah, he'll walk inside, you mean, from there?
I know.
And I think we're going to try and get some wheelchairs. Would he use that if we had some of those?
I would get wheelchairs.
Yeah. We could contact COA.
Yep, I would do that because...
Yep.
Good call.
Yep.
Good call.
So we'll try and, you know, I mean, it's, a lot of it's weather-dependent, you know, and people knowing about it, but yet it is going to be kind of a walk.
And will there be sort of volunteers that can push people up and down in the wheelchair? Okay. Yeah.
Yeah. So getting that many people in a room, that's the tough part.
Oh, yeah.
You know, if 1,000 people show up, I mean, they can sit, but it'll take a little bit of time to get them all through. So, you know, the starting at 6 o'clock is good because then even if that takes longer, it won't be like starting at 8:00 PM.
But it is also, we'll be on daylight, saving time, so we'll pick up an hour.
Right. So it'll be lighter, and we think that that will be better for some of our citizens who don't like going out in the dark.
Yeah.
Like me.
You live in Andover.
Right. And I mean, leaving at the dark, like, I like it. I like the summer better when I get home at 9 o'clock and it's still light out. Bring on the light, I say. So that's what's going on in the Selectmen's office, and so we're ready.
Okay, great. And nothing else to report? Because it's town meeting 24/7, you said, okay?
Should note that the town reports should be in by the Tuesday before, which is March the 4th.
Okay.
Tuesday before, yeah. We probably will have it posted online sooner than that. We get the electronic version, and so I will send out an email to everybody so we know that it's ready.
Great, great, thank you. That's great. Be good to have that also for the next police meeting, so. Committee meetings, Janet?
The Planning Board met on Tuesday night, I'm sorry. The Planning Board met on Tuesday night, and John Doyle, who is involved with the Mesapond Protective Association, reviewed some of the actions they've taken over there with regard to helping mitigate drainage. He was really complimentary of Sam and the Public Works Department for all the help that they've gotten. And things are, drainage is much better on Mesapond because of it. And the other thing that we agreed to do is we're going to look at site plan regs to see if we're going to propose any changes. And with regard to site plan, we don't have to go to town meeting for those. Those we can do ourselves.
Okay, great. I assume that is a project for the summer, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Leisure.
Leisure, leisure time, okay. Bibi?
I, the only thing I had was a bike pedestrian committee meeting last week that I missed. And I haven't even heard how it went, so not sure what to report on that. I will say, the week before, there's sort of been a subgroup formed in that bike ped committee. Grant Smith has, is working on getting a group together to try to build some mountain biking trails around town, and he's working with the Conservation Commission on that. I went to a meeting a couple of weeks ago at the library, which was very well-attended, and he's really, really got a lot of young people to turn out and get really excited about it with little kids that have to drive all the way up to Upper Valley just to do mountain biking activities and things like that. So that was kind of fun, that he's getting that group together. Yep.
Okay, and I missed a meeting of the Waste Reduction Commission. Okay, and I missed a meeting of the Waste Reduction Committee, but their minutes are already online, so you can see them there. John, I think you were there, so anything hot that we should talk about tonight?
We're just concerned integrating the, you know, town citizens committee advisory committee as we sunset...
Right.
Possibly in July.
Great, well, thank you all for continuing to work on that. Okay, meeting minutes, we've got five here, January twenty-second, third, and eighth, and February second and eleventh. Kim has asked us to provide her with any type of stuff in advance, and so any other substantive changes? Or, Kim, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of January twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-eighth, February second, and eleventh.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we've got our upcoming meetings. I think apparently this thing's sitting around, so Peter Nichols would like to be sure that we put on the list every time we do this, the April fifth Community Housing Forum, another major event in the HOP grant year, so hopefully everybody will have that on their calendar. Any other business? No? Okay, we're going to then go into non-public session under RSA ninety-one, A three-two to discuss a personnel matter. Afterwards, we'll come out, sign the vouchers, et cetera.
Okay.
All in favor?
Yes, Casey. Kitter, yes.
Helm, yes. Thank you.